Today is November twenty-third.
There you go.
Sounded great with sound effects, didn't it? Today is November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, ten a.m. Regular meeting of Commissioners Court. I'm Commissioner Chris Kirkendall. Judge Wade McDaniel without ill. I'm serving as Judge Protil. If you would all rise for the indication by Commissioner Allen Roberts and the pledge of allegiance.
The gracious heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings you have given us. Watch over and guide us in the directions that we need to go with this court. Please be with our county judge as he goes through his illness, that he will recuperate rapidly and get back to work. These things I ask in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Item number three, approved minutes of the November ninth, twenty-twenty-one regular and special meeting. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Young. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number four, considered and possibly approved. A, a request to cancel all registered claims for November ninth, twenty-twenty-one. B, the cash statement. C, the quarterly report for quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, thirty-five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and six cents. These vouchers to the county's bills and federal related expenses that were presented and approved at the Commissioners Court. Commissioners Court, on November ninth. On our cash report and general checking. We have nine million, ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. In tax pool, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and nine cents for totaling cash funds of nine million, ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and three cents. On our quarterly report for the third quarter of twenty-twenty-one ending nine-thirty. In general checking, we had eleven million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and fifty-seven cents. In tax pool, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and nine cents for totaling cash funds of eleven million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. So this report shows a decrease in the cash balance for the third quarter of twenty-twenty-one in the amount of five million, sixty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and ninety-eight cents.
We've heard the reports. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills. As presented by Angela Gore of County Attorney.
The pre-approved expenditures for November the tenth are thirty-five thousand, four hundred and five dollars and ninety-six cents. Pre-approved expenditures for November the seventeenth through the eighteenth are five hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are three hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. A list of additional bills total twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars for the total expenditures and transfers of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifteen cents. Gross payroll for November the eighteenth was five hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the total transfers for that payroll is eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Move pay the bill. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number six, recognize John Arseno for ten years of dedicated service to Hardin County and wish him well on his retirement as maintenance supervisor. And I know that the judge would like to be here today to present this to you. I would just like to go around to the court. I know we've all had to work with John and since the judge isn't here and just have everybody kind of lay in on some words for John on his retirement.
Good luck, John, on your retirement. Thank you for the service you put into the county. And I hope, uh, Brian can match your work, work ethics. So we'll see. Good luck. Thank you.
John, you've been a pleasure to work with. It's been fun and I just wish you the best on your retirement. I hope y'all both have a great time and a very, very long retirement.
Do I get to talk? John and I go way back, uh, to when we were kids. We grew up in the same neighborhood. And, uh, I get, I always, I could tell everybody what your nickname. We all called him Arsenic. And I don't know where he got that from, but, uh, it's been a pleasure, John, being with you in these years, you know, as we're getting older. And I look forward to joining you in your retirement shortly, but congratulations, buddy. I'm, I'm glad you're there.
Thanks, ma'am. I appreciate it.
How's her Ms. Arseno? She beat you to it, too, by the way.
Anybody in the gallery wish to say anything?
I just want to thank John for the tireless hours and time he spent helping decorate for the tree lighting. And, uh, all the other things that I've asked, I mean, through all the other little things I've taken on. But I appreciate you so much and everything you've done. You've never batted an eye. You've never looked at me mean. You've always smiled and just said, okay, Regina. And I just, I want you to know how much I truly appreciate you.
Love you.
I would like to say on behalf of the tax office how much we appreciate John. Um, I know he has nightmares about our sink. He will not have any more nightmares, John, relax. But Brian can repast on Brian. But he never, a crossword, never, every time we'd go to him, he'd, he'd just always, okay, yes, ma'am, I'm off. And we appreciate that so much, John. You're just a, you've just been a man to work with. And we appreciate all of your hard work that you spend in the hard count. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I'll just say that it's been a pleasure working with you. I don't know that I've ever had a cross encounter. Uh, you've always been helpful. Appreciate you, especially when we were passing out the voting booths and all that. And when you guys took that over, that was a great burden relief from, from us. And y'all done an amazing job. Uh, you're irreplaceable, although someone would be hired to, to work your position. But you were the right personality, right skill set, and you've done an amazing job. And I know Wayne would like, or the judge would like to be here today to congratulate you on your retirement. So I have a presentation for you on behalf of the judge. I figured I told the judge that he couldn't retire since he wasn't here today. This is your certificate and this is your jacket. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jessica. I appreciate it. I'm enjoying working here.
Hmm. Keep looking at this. I've got a lot of new friends out there. Look at this audio.
Yeah. Thank you, brother.
That kind of makes up for that Johnny Paycheck song he sent to the judge.
All right, item number seven, review and discuss TDA Section Three, presentation as required for TXCDEG number seven-two-two-zero-one-eight-nine by Linda Smith, Vice President, Project Manager, Trailer and Associates.
Good morning. I believe y'all have one of these in your pocket. I would like to point out that this is a TDA template, the lovely wording, but it's extremely hard to read and printed is part of that. Um, so Section Three has been a part of the HUD-based, uh, CDPG programs for some time. Um, every few years, it bubbles up that the state and communities aren't meeting the goals. Um, and it's very difficult for rural communities to do so. This is a program that really was designed, um, with more urban communities in mind, places like New York City, where you might have someone walking down the street where they're, um, erecting a big, huge apartment building with multiple units. And, um, you know, someone walking down the street may see a sign saying, you know, we're looking for painters. And someone may be unemployed or have a relative who has the equipment they could use and be hired to, to help build a building, you know, where you've got climbers, electricians, painters, you know, all kinds of things. Program wasn't really adapted or changed any for rural communities where we have mostly, you know, water line replacements, street improvements, onsite sewage facilities, such as this. Um, nonetheless, it is a requirement. And the requirement is that we make efforts to both educate the public about Section Three, which is the purpose for the presentation today, and then try our best to meet the goals of employing or offering training to Section Three workers. So we'll talk a little bit about, you know, who those people are and what those qualifications are as we go through. I'm going to make this, um, fairly brief, mostly because the presentation itself is fairly brief. Um, but also because, you know, this is a grant that y'all have recurring. Y'all have something somewhere every few years. So I know this is something y'all are at least vaguely familiar with. Um, this is in reference to grant number seven-two-two-oh-one-eight-nine. The award amount of that grant is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the project is this onsite sewer facility, um, replacements for low-income residents throughout the county. The grant is funded through the Community Development Block Grant via U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Texas Department of Agriculture. As a condition of funding, the county must comply with Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of nineteen-sixty-eight. And to the greatest extent feasible, recipients must strict economic opportunities generated by CDPG funds to low and very low income persons. In part, this means ensuring that Section Three businesses have the information to submit a bid or proposal for the project. And Section Three workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. And they do go into more information on the definitions themselves in the CDPG manual and then those doing policy issues number twenty dash oh-one, which is available online if anyone wishes to view it. Um, and this, the county has adopted a Section Three policy during the start of this grant. And we actually do maintain that policy for you in the grant files as well as a registry for businesses to register should they wish to be notified of future bidding opportunities. At this time, no one has done so in Hardin County. Um, a company may qualify as a Section Three business if it's owned by a low-income person, if it's owned by a Section Eight assisted housing resident, or if seventy-five percent of all labor hours for the business in a three-month period are performed by Section Three workers. Um, Section Three is determined by HUD housing income limits. And it is actually determined by the number of people in your household as well as income. So to qualify as a Section Three business, basically people would self-certify to any of these things being true. The forms to do so, again, located in the county's project files if anyone ever did come up and say, hey, we want to register. And you can also register on HUD's Section Three website to be notified of all opportunities in the area. And this project in particular is expected to include the following contracting opportunities. Grant administration and engineering services, which have both been previously selected. And then a contractor for the sewer facility replacement itself. And those contractors may or may not be using subcontractors depending on the services they offer. Um, you may qualify as a Section Three worker if your annual income is below the county threshold for your family size, again, going on Section Three, or Section Eight income limits. Or your current or recent youth build participant. Um, residents can register their information and search for opportunities at both workintexas.gov and then HUD's Section Three Opportunity Portal. Section Three workers that reside near the project location may also qualify as what we're now calling targeted Section Three workers, which really just means that it's within the confines of the project area or within a radius of the project itself. For this project, the service area is defined by the map. Since there are locations throughout the county, it is the entire county that is considered a targeted area. And the county will track all hours worked on the project based on three categories of worker. And I should say that the county, in this instance, means your grant administrator will be taking care of that for you and through certified payrolls and information from the contractor. And it will require certain, um, income information to be collected. So basically, I want to look at all of the hours worked and then determine how many of those hours were worked by Section Three workers. And then even further, how many are Section Three workers within the, the defined area on the map. And all of this information is basically required by Texas CDPG Policy Issues Number Twenty dash oh-one. Um, and it goes back to twenty-four CBR Part Seventy-Five. Should anyone wish to really read all of it, if you really find yourself in need of something to do. Otherwise, I would say, this is all you need to know for now. Um, this is kind of an evolving thing with trying to make sure that the communities and state meets the goals. So this is what we have for this year. Things may change for next year as they dive into it. Right now, it is just TDA programs. It's not going to affect your, um, blow CDPG projects that you also have as a consultant. Um, though there are requirements, this is one and done for this program.
Does anybody on the court have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Uh, I would like to make a statement. And it has nothing to do with you. I know you have a job to do. But if the federal government wants to pursue this Section Three stuff, I think the Secretary of HUD ought to be a Section Three person and not a billionaire, so, you know.
I agree with that. Uh, Amanda, I know that, uh, you've done this in the past on behalf of the county. Do you have anything to, to add to it?
No, I think this is just some housekeeping stuff that they usually throw something new at us every time. We do one of these, so.
Does it look like there's a new monitoring focus every few years or something?
Every time, yeah.
And Alex, your office would be handling that, right? Your office?
Yes, sir.
No, who's handling it on behalf of the county?
Michelle Brewer.
Okay, excellent. So, uh, Michelle Brewer.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay, that's good. All right. That's the information on item only, so thank you so much for being here, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item number eight, request to amend the fiscal year twenty-two, which, is that one correct?
This is correct.
Okay. Request to amend the fiscal year twenty-two R and B four budget by creating a new line item, zero-one-seven-dash-six-two-four-dash-four-five-oh, billing maintenance repairs and transfer sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars from the R and B fund balance to this new line item for replacement of the metal roof on the R and B four department building, Commissioner Allen Roberts. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, a second by Commissioner Young. Is there any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number nine, the, uh, on the, uh, court docket, it says, uh, request to amend the fiscal year twenty-two. That should be stated. Request to amend the fiscal year twenty-one general fund budget by creating a new line item, zero-one-zero-dash-four-zero-one-dash-two-seven-eight, local match hurricane safe room and transfer twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents from zero-one-zero-dash-four-zero-one-dash-eight-zero-zero, contingency general to this new line item. Angela, would you like to?
Yes, sir. This, this is just a local match for phase one of our hurricane safe rooms that's been requested. And we do need to amend the budget for this year twenty-twenty-one and not twenty-twenty-two because the work is previously done in twenty-one. So at this point, it's just, um, the, the six-point-two-five percent of our local match that we have to meet on the invoices that we've currently received. Phase one.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Young and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item number ten, consider and possibly approve request to amend Hardin County subdivision rules, Article three-point-oh, Section G three, D two, to allow landscape culverts with provisions, Commissioner Allen Roberts.
Okay, and this is, uh, this is something that we all have talked about, uh, especially nowadays. Uh, when, uh, the original subdivision regulations went in, we didn't have any way of cleaning these type of culverts out. We do now. We have machines that do it. So, um, uh, we got together and, and basically discussed it, you know, the need for it. And, um, and I was kind of, since I'm over to the subdivision regulations, uh, came up with it and, um, ran it by Matt. And he said it sounded good, so, um, this is where we are. Uh, do you want, you want me to read them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, the change to, to, of course, is, uh, that they were not allowed at all, completely not allowed at all. The difference in the landscape culverts, and I'm going to say this upfront, uh, so everybody understands, uh, it only, it only shows it to be, uh, that you can only put the, the plastic type pipes in and not concrete. And the reason for this is, is the concrete comes in shorter sections, like four-foot sections, and tends to have a problem with coming apart, whereas the, the, uh, plastic comes in longer sections and it's easier to maintain. Um, and so this is what it's going to change to. This is landscape culverts will be allowed in subdivisions once the warranty period is ended and drainage and roads are accepted by the county. A permit will be required from the county prior to installation. Inspection of the ditch to be landscaped shall be done by the county prior to any installation to determine, to determine the size of the culverts to be installed. Preparation of the ditch and ensure proper grade will be performed by the county. And that could be anywhere from, uh, just mopping or, uh, getting the right gration, the right grade, to whoever's going to put it in. These will be put in by the, 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 the landowner, the homeowner will have them put in and they'll be paying for it. Uh, size of culverts will be determined by the county and drain cleanout openings shall be spaced not more than thirty feet apart. Openings for these shall be below road grade and ground grade to ensure surface drainage and be, be the same size as the drainage culvert and be covered with a grate. Culverts must be high-density polyethylene, H O P E pipe, ADS-N twelve or equivalent. Insta, installation of culverts will be at the owner's expense, which includes cost of all materials. Prior to covering culverts, the county will inspect the installation. Any damage to any part of the landscaping will be the property's owner for responsibility for repair. And that part is basically like if somebody drives across the culverts or breaks one of the grates or all that on, on the person's property, that's, that's going to be up to them. That will be a part of the county's problem.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Young. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number eleven, consider adoption of rev- resolution thirty-two-dash-twenty-one to cast votes in the election of the Board of Directors of the Hardin County Appraisal District.
I move that we adopt resolution thirty-two-dash-twenty-one and the judge's assistant has it down as eleven-A or eleven-B. I, I move to go with eleven-A uh, to be consistent with, uh, the historical, uh, votes of the court to go with what the ISB's put on, so that would be eleven-A.
Is that your motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
So, uh, second. So we got a motion by Commissioner Cooper, a second by Commissioner Roberts. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number twelve, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids to replace approximately one thousand, three hundred and forty feet of concrete roadway on Travis Street located in precinct one, Commissioner Cooper. So moved.
Second.
Got a, got a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Young. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign cooperative agreement between Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and Hardin County to establish a partnership between the citizens of Hardin County and AgriLife Extension. Katie Pace, Extension Agent.
So this is actually not new. Um, they just have not renewed it in probably about twenty years. That is our best guess. And it is a new initiative that came down from our Director of AgriLife. We have had, um, Mr. Minnick go through it. Everything's good on his side of it. He changed some of the wording. It was going to be a five-year contract. And he said, let's change it to where he signs it this one time, it'll automatically renew for the next four years and it'll expire in twenty-twenty-six. All it is, is a updated version of what the county is, you know, responsible for on our end and what AgriLife is responsible for. Because since it's done twenty-some-odd years ago, most people have probably never seen whatever the original one was. And I don't, I know our office doesn't have a copy of it.
Having heard the presentation, do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, a second by Commissioner Roberts. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Item number fourteen, consider approval of request to pay Hart Inter-Civic Invoice Number Zero-eight-five-five-four-two in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents for ballots for the November second, twenty-twenty-one constitutional amendment election. Linda Austin, but we have Connie here today, so.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, no, item number fifteen, consider and possibly accept final plat of tranquility forest phase two located in precinct one, Alex Parker, floodplain administrator. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, consider and possibly authorize request for approval to apply for a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar National Association of County and City Health Officials grant with support from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Division of Immunization for Funding Opportunities to Support Jurisdictions in Identifying and Addressing Disparities in COVID-nineteen and Influence of Vaccination Coverage Among Rational and Ethnic Minority Adults. No local match required. Sharon Whitley, Health Director. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Roberts, a second by Commissioner Young. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, consider and possibly approve to add an additional administrative assistant position in the Health Services Department at a pay rate of seventeen dollars per hour to coincide with current administrative assistant job descriptions. Previously approved in Commissioners Court on May third, twenty-twenty-one. This is a one-hundred-percent grant-funded position. Sharon Whitley, Health Director. So moved. Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Roberts, second by Commissioner Cooper. Uh, Angela, do you know, uh, if this grant will help assist with, uh, the Attorney's Office? Will there be any funds set aside to help fund that or?
No, sir, not this, not this.
Okay. So we got a motion by Commissioner Roberts, second by Commissioner Cooper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number eighteen, consider and possibly approve request to sell the following equipment utilizing Renee Bates Auctioneers Incorporated, requested by Commissioner L.W. Cooper. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Young. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number nineteen, discuss, discussion and possible action to correct award of bid of motor fuel, oil and lubricants for all road and bridge departments and emergency generators previously approved in Commissioners Court on October the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, Misty Sims versus.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, the two I was questioning about, Mr. Delaina from Mighty of Southeast Texas called me and, um, has been very kind and explained the motor oil to me. On, um, for the SAE thirty and SAE forty, that is what we asked for. And we awarded Suncoast for five W twenty and five W thirty. So I think that needs to be corrected.
Is that on page three?
Page four.
Page four, okay. So having had the presentation to, uh, to correct the bid from Suncoast to Mighty of Southeast Texas, do we have a motion? So moved.
I have another one, too, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay. On the, on the next page, we kind of did the same thing. We asked for five W forty and we awarded to Suncoast. And they bid fifteen W forty. So I feel like for SAE thirty and forty, we should have awarded Mighty. They were the low bid there and, and bid the correct thing. And then for five W forty, we should have awarded Tricon because they're the low bidder there and, and actually bid what we asked for.
Is this, uh, Mighty, is this the one that come back after he bid something and wanted us to raise the bid because of demand or something?
Yes, sir.
Pricing or?
Yes, sir. They locked theirs in for ninety days and they say it'll be longer if this market stays stable. Yes, sir, they locked theirs in for ninety days, and they say it'll be longer if this market stays stable.
And on the other, did we get any other bids for longer than ninety days?
Yes, sir, yeah, at a, if we would like to award a one and two, we could possibly do that.
On our request for proposal, do we give a timeframe that we're asking for?
We did ask for a year, but we awarded them, is it transmission fluid? On transmission fluid, which is on page three, we awarded them number one and a number two for that reason.
So I guess my question would be, if, if he, if, so I guess we could do number one and number two, and I'm looking to y'all for help too, that if we ask for a year, we have one vendor who's locked it in, one who hasn't?
Yes, sir.
Would that disqualify them? If they, if they are looking to adjust and go up, or can we, can we approve it where it's locked in on that ninety-day price, and should it go up, we go to number two?
Yes, sir, that's what we did on transmission fluids, so.
So, so would that be your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Cooper made the motion, Commissioner Roberts seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number twenty, consider approval of request to appoint a committee to evaluate proposals received for demolition services pertaining to flood mitigation assistance program, fiscal year twenty eighteen, FMA eighteen, Misty Sims, purchasing agent.
And that committee would be Commissioner Young, Aaron Tepper, and Michelle Brewer.
Anybody on the court?
Move to move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Roberts, all in favor?
Aha.
Uh, show that it passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one, discussion only of any item on the agenda without taking any action, anybody on the court have anything?
Uh, Commissioner Tepper, now I'd like to just, uh, I know I sent an email to all Commissioners, Judge, the tax collector, and, uh, the clerk in regards to the boundary changes, it was very minimal, but it had to be done.
Yes.
We got that done, and according to the lawyer from Austin, we did not have to have a public hearing, uh, but whenever we adopt our, uh, voter, uh, boundary line precinct is when we will incorporate that change into there, I just wanted to make the court aware of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, yes, ma'am.
You just reminded that we're having the case of Congress for John, they're talking today.
Okay, so right after court, we'll, we'll go, uh, meet in the dome, and Shirley, thank you to your office, and thank y'all to y'all's office for everybody who was on that call, looking at voter precincts, Commissioner Cooper, and, uh, that seemed to go very well, and, uh, a lot of things to consider with the growth of the county, and so just say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, it's here, you know, and, uh, well, I'll be eating good Thursday, and hopefully the Cowboys, uh, get us to victory, but that's left to be seen, and so, uh, thank, thank my fellow commissioners for making this easy on me today, I wish the judge was here doing this instead of myself, but y'all made it very easy for me, so thank you very much. And, uh, if there's nothing else, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
By Commissioner Cooper and by Commissioner Roberts, uh, all in favor?
Aha.
Any who oppose? Meeting is adjourned.